We're live.
We're playing Oregon there for a while.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a down and eligible liberty and justice.
(coughing).
(inaudible).
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 Resolution three thirty-six, approving the minutes of the previous meetings.
Resolved at the minute of October sixth and October fourteenth, two thousand twelve, be approved in reading of the minutes be dispensed with.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Cashman, second. Mr. Wood, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. (inaudible). Resolution three thirty-seven, abstract ten B.
Resolved that the abstract of the audit of claims number ten D dash fourteen, eighteen eighty-nine to nineteen seventy-nine, for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and three dollars and forty-three cents, an abstract ten D dash fourteen, three eighty-six to four oh nine, prepaid in the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars, be received as reviewed by the audit committee and supervised hereby authorized to place out.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Cashman, second.
So moved.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three thirty-eight, building maintenance and safety committee monthly report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a report from our row, building and maintenance supervisor for the month of September two thousand fourteen.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Mannix, second.
Second.
Mr. Wood, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three thirty-nine, parts and recreation department monthly report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a report from Mallory to fire recreation and youth director for the month of September two thousand fourteen.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wood, second.
Second.
Mr. Cashman, any discussion?
I just want to say that I was able to attend one of the forums that the town held in collaboration with the city branch department, and I think that survey is going to serve our region very well, and looking forward to the formal results coming from that, so...
You know, the numbers are getting close to a thousand respondents, which is a pretty significant number for anything in our community.
I think it should be interesting.
Great. Any other discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three forty, planning department monthly report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a report from Philbon Bargain Planning and Engineering Department head for the month of October two thousand fourteen.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Mannix, second.
Second.
Mr. Cashman, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three forty-one, supervisors' monthly financial report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a supervisor's financial report for the month of September two thousand fourteen.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Cashman, second.
Second.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, the resolution carries. Resolution three forty-two, town clerk's monthly report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a report from Rick Collins, town clerk, for the month of September two thousand fourteen.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wood, second.
Second.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, the resolution carries. Resolution three forty-three, waste, water wastewater department's monthly report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a report from Scott Stoddard, water and wastewater director, for the month of September two thousand fourteen.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wood, second.
Second.
Mr. Cashman, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. I know we have a student here this evening joining us. Welcome. Thank you for coming. I just want to make a note, these resolutions we just went through very quickly are standard monthly reports from various departments. It isn't that we don't discuss them. We have a work session prior to a regular session. At that time, we get to go over draft resolutions. There are board members that are part of committees for each of those departments, and those board members may have interacted with various aspects of the report. So we're communicating all the time until we get here, and we formalize the passing of that. Sometimes there'll be some comments because something new's happened here, or there's something we want to make sure and acknowledge to the public, as Mr. Cashman did concerning the survey that's being done. But I know when I sat in those seats, I kind of wondered how things just gin mill that rapidly. Believe me, it's just part of the process, but a lot of time went into this before discussion and so on. And I say that at the time when we're getting to resolutions that may require some further discussion. We don't get together as a group unless it's a session like this. We can't have a quorum unless there's public notice opportunity for public to be here. So outside of the reports, sometimes some of these slow down things a little bit, and some of these may be resolutions we've worked on in great length, and they're finally to the point of approval. Okay, so I hope that helps a little bit with some of what you're hearing that may seem like we're just speeding through stuff. Resolution three thirty-four, setting a public hearing for certain elected officials' salaries in the two thousand fifteen preliminary budget.
Whereas a public notice for the primary preliminary budget and certain elected officials' salaries must be shared, therefore be resolved that the notice of hearing entitled Setting a Public Hearing for Elected Officials' Salaries for the two thousand fifteen preliminary budget shall be published once in the newspaper, posted in the town hall and on the town website as indicated. Notice is hereby given to the preliminary budget for the town of Placerville for the beginning of the year January one, two thousand fifteen, will be compiled and filed at the office of the town on or before October thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. Further, the notice is hereby given to the town board. Town of Placerville will meet and review said preliminary budget and hold public hearings thereon at the town hall located at Banker Road in the town of Placerville, Clinton County, New York, on Thursday, November sixth, two thousand fourteen, at seven oh five P.M. prevailing time. At such, at such hearing, any person may be heard in favor or against the preliminary budget as compiled for or against any item or items there contained. The list of councilperson, supervisor, town clerk, highway superintendent. A copy of this preliminary budget will be available for inspection for all its parties at the town hall on Baker Road between the hours of eight A.M. and four P.M. And it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the finance manager.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wood, second.
Second.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion?
Yeah, um, go ahead. The, uh, the public hearings, we're having the district, their district starting at seven fifteen, so if we start the budget hearing at seven, we probably won't get to these. Are you going to just open them all up?
Um, usually that's worked pretty well, Tom, to open them all up, and we'll just keep the other hearings going, stop the public hearing on the budget long enough to close the hearing on the district, then go back to the budget, open another public hearing on another special district, close that. Just keep it going. Otherwise, we'd be quietly sitting here as we went through the hearings on the special districts.
Okay. I just want to, I just want to make sure because, you know, sometimes there's a lot more comments and it takes longer than that.
No, we, we won't, there's no closing time for the hearing. I mean, it, the hearing on the budget will stay open until it's no longer reasonable to do that. Any other discussion?
I just want to say speaking to this specific resolution, there was a change from some of the tentative things that have been out over the last couple of weeks, and I'm glad to see that the reduction for it's gone back to the original levels for the council, the supervisor. So I'm glad to see that, and I'm looking forward to hearing public comment because, as we had talked before, during the process for the tentative budget hearings, it was good to have some members of the public attend, but certainly hope that others will come for this portion.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so has that been changed on our website then? Since, apparently, we were told was that it was higher than that?
The tentative budget had the salaries proposed for two thousand fifteen at the same levels they are this year. This year was reduced from the previous year. In a work session, I had a draft of this resolution that had the salaries restored to where they were in two thousand thirteen. For the point of discussion and to make sure everybody understood, if you don't change them, the only thing you can do in the final budget is lower them. So we're back where we were. I couldn't go back and change the resolution, the draft resolution for the work session, because that was the draft resolution. We discussed it, and they're back where they were.
I understand. I just want to make sure that, you know, our website reflects that.
Well, the website will reflect this resolution for this evening's agenda.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I think it's important that the correction, if it, if these numbers are not the numbers that are on the website, that the website numbers be changed to reflect this resolution, I think it's important. Part of the reason it's important is, I think, you know, one of the significant messages that has to be consistently made is, you know, we had a financial issue. We've addressed that financial issue. I think we've addressed it, and we've addressed it with a, with a significant measure of success. That does not mean that we all of a sudden forget about the steps we had to take in order to get into a more successful posture. And, and, and so consequently, I'm very happy to see that these numbers are back in place the way they were. It was not my intention to vote for any increases, and you know, that's where I am.
And that is...
I mean, I don't, I have no problem with it.
That it, that is...
Just that it's reflected.
That is, this agenda for this meeting is the one that is on the website. The agenda for the work session would be the one on the website. If it's nothing to correct, that is the draft resolution that was there. And we've amended that further to be back to these numbers, which, just for clarity, the two thousand fourteen salaries for councilpersons and supervisor were reduced from two thousand thirteen, and I believe the clerk and highway remain the same. And they'll all be the same as this year in next year's budget unless it changes between now and can't, when it passes. This is it. So we're all set, continuing the same salaries as were in two thousand fourteen. All right, is that clear as much?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
It's just for those individuals that are listed there, though, or those positions that are listed there.
Those are the only ones that we have to list and...
That have to be dealt with.
Right, and then it takes a local law that's subject to referendum to increase them. You can't lower them further. You just can't increase them.
Bernie, how many days before the hearings is in the newspaper?
At least five.
Okay, because there's no date when it would be available, so, but that's already...
Yeah.
It's the thirty-first, so you're...
It'll, it'll be in compliance. Soon as we add it, we'll put it out.
Five days is good, yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the board? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three forty-five, public hearing notice for consolidated assessment.
Resolved that a public hearing be held by the town, town board at the town hall in Banker Road on Thursday, November sixth, two thousand fourteen, prevailing time, as noted for the proposed of the hearing and consideration of objections to which may be made to the completely consolidated assessment goal that are on file with the town clerk pursuant to town law section two thirty-nine as follows. Do you want me to read the times or no?
Has it?
As noted, resolved that the town clerk is hereby directed to have published and impressed a public notice of said public hearing to be held at the town hall one fifty-one Banker Road. And it be further resolved that a certified copy of this resolution be given to the finance manager.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Cashman, second.
Second.
Mr. Wood, any discussion?
Point, should we not, instead of just simply saying ambulance, might we not better refer to that as a consolidated ambulance?
Uh, we should.
I have no issue with that.
Um, any other discussion? Tom, you're okay with the change on ambulance district?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three forty-six, J.C.E.O.'s services and financial assistance agreement.
Whereas the town, town of Placerville town board is in receipt of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen annual agreement between the town of Placerville and the joint council for economic opportunity of Placerville and Clinton County Incorporated, which states the services and financial assistance rendered by both parties for the operation of the community outreach, outreach program in the town of Placerville for periods commencing December first, two thousand fourteen, and ending November thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. And whereas a request for twenty thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars was made, an increase over last year's charge of eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, whereas the town board has given consideration to the request, but for the economic environment and significant increase in previous years, as well as other in-kind services provided by the town, has decided to keep the contribution for the outreach program at its current level. Therefore be resolved, the supervisor is hereby authorized to make payment in a net amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars to J.C.E.O., and it is further resolved that payment be made payable from the town of Placerville general fund, and that the town board does hereby authorize the supervisor to sign and execute said agreement upon approval to the form by town attorney. And it's further resolved that an executed copy of this agreement be returned to J.C.E.O. for their files, and one be given to the finance manager.
Motion.
So moved.
Mr. Cashman, second.
Second.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, the resolution carries. Resolution three forty-seven, water rate adjustment, effective January one, two thousand fifteen.
Whereas the greater town of Placerville Consolidated Water District and Park District are duly established water districts and have appropriated expenditures for operation and maintenance of its water system, whereas there is a need to provide sufficient revenue to offset operations and maintenance expenditures, whereas the town board recognizes that the responsibility of maintaining a safe and reliable water system requires increase in rates that will both sustain its system as well as interfere for any future capital improvements. Whereas the proposed rate adjustment shall be fully effective January one, two thousand fifteen, and be retroactive to the date of the previous billing period, including any and all outside users, to be set as follows. Metered rate shall be one dollar and fifty-one cents per thousand gallons, with a minimum per month of six dollars and sixty cents or twenty dollars per quarter based on the customer billing frequency. Therefore be resolved that these new rates shall be in place and be effective on the first quarterly billing cycle, retroactive as noted. And it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the finance manager and the wastewater department.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wood, second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cashman, any discussion?
We'll call.
Uh, the, the number was read as six dollars and sixty cents or twenty dollars per quarter. Six dollars, sixty-seven cents or twenty dollars per quarter, just in case anybody was looking at that. And I would just like to say that, uh, with the meetings I've been to, that this is really very, very small, and that there's much other work needed in our, in our departments for the, to keep, to keep our, our resources coming in a manner that will be safe and sufficient for our, the people in our, in our town.
I'd, I'd like to request that we table this resolution. I'd like to have us, uh, discuss the, the outside user rate. I'm a, I'm a strong believer that the outside user rate should not be the same as the metered rate.
That's not at all mentioned in this. I mean, we can address that in a totally separate resolution and move on this for residents. This doesn't bind outside users.
Bernie, are you, are you looking, and I'm glad that you went there, because that's what was taking me a little longer to get this conversation started, to make sure that the comparison is there. So I would support your motion to table for now.
Or would you like to strike outside users from this resolution and set this for residents?
No, I, Bernie, my concern is that when I read that last sentence, it, it refers to any and all outside users. And, and I believe we are setting a rate for those users.
Right, we are, we are in this, but we could strike that out of this resolution and set this rate for residents, and then that would give us a base to talk about how we should treat outside users based on this increase. Or we can table, I mean, you made a motion to table. I, I shouldn't be arguing.
I'd rather see us, I'd rather see us do it.
Discuss the whole thing over. We have the motion to table. Do we have a second?
A second. And, and the reason that I, that I'm doing so is I would like to make sure that the, the resolution that we pass has both of those rates in the same resolution.
In the same resolution.
So that people understand, you know, how it compares to one another, so...
It's a good idea. Okay, so we have a motion to table. Mr. Mannix, second. Mr. Cashman, we'll call on the motion to table.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, the, uh, resolution three forty-seven will be tabled by the end of next week. Resolution three forty-eight, contract number one, Route Three and Sorrell Avenue Pump Station Change Order Number Two.
Whereas the resolution fourteen dash ninety-two of the town of Placerville previously awarded to Stephen E. Fuller Incorporated to bid to provide work on Route Three and Sorrell Avenue Pump Station. Whereas Leburg Engineering Consulting Group and Scott Stoddard, Director of the Water and Wastewater Department, have reviewed the proposed change order number two as indicated. Therefore be resolved, the supervisor is hereby authorized to accept change order number two in a total amount of two hundred and forty thousand, thirty-four dollars and seventy-two cents for Sorrell Avenue Pump Station and Route Three Pump Station dated October third, two thousand fourteen, from the capital two thousand thirteen Water and Wastewater Budget Account, Sorrell Avenue, for one hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-two cents for the Route Three, for one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety cents. And it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the Water and Wastewater Director, Finance Manager, and Stephen E. Fuller, Excavating Incorporated.
Have motion.
Move things along.
Motion.
Mr. Cashman, second.
Second.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion?
We'll call. This is just, this is just for that particular pump station.
Okay.
No, it's actually affecting two pump stations.
Yeah, okay.
Both the Sorrell Avenue and the Route Three Pump Station.
Oh, okay, wait, it was changed, it was, was changed from one to two. I got the old resolution change order number, okay.
Okay, okay, Tom?
Yep.
Any other discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three forty-nine, acceptance of rubber snowblades for highway department.
Whereas it is necessary to maintain equipment for the continued maintenance and improvements of all highways within the town of Placerville, whereas procedures for purchase of commodities, equipments of goods, and contract values require the town to solicit price quotes for an amount in excess of five thousand dollars for services. Whereas James Wood, Highway Superintendent, has solicited prices and requested permission to place an order for rubber drilled snow blade. And it be further resolved, whereas a quote has been received and a total estimated cost for the rubber blade for snow plows of five thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Therefore be resolved that the town board approve the purchase as recommended by the highway superintendent, and is hereby authorized to make said purchase. And it be further resolved that payment be made payable from the two thousand fourteen highway budget equipment capital outlay account, and that a copy of this resolution be given to the finance manager.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Mannix, second.
Second.
Mr. Wood, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three fifty, two thousand fourteen base sewer slip lining project change order.
Whereas the town of Placerville Water and Wastewater Department went out to bid and awarded the base slip, base sewer slip lining project two thousand fourteen. Whereas the municipal multi-phase project was previously identified and prioritized to address costly inflow and infiltration problems within the former U.S. Air Force Base, aged and failing water infrastructure. Whereas due to advantageous unit pricing by the low bidder, R.O. Construction, and after consulting with the town finance manager and engineering consultant, the Water and Wastewater Director recommends that the town board allocate an amount not to exceed ninety-six thousand, two hundred dollars that is available in the two thousand fourteen base sewer district budget, to take advantage of the awarded price to continue the slip lining process. Now therefore be resolved that the town board is hereby authorized the finance manager to transfer funds from, from the SS six to the H zero six account to continue the base slip lining capital project as indicated. And it be further resolved, supervisor be authorized to execute said change order to extend contract quantities and length of contract completion date. And it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the finance manager and the Water and Wastewater Director.
Have motion.
So moved.
Mr. Cashman, second.
Second.
Mr. Wood, any discussion?
Yeah, I think this is a, a major advantageous thing for us that the price came in that way, and that we can get this extra done, because we had to set up five phases, and, and we, this was the second phase of trying to get the, the infiltration out of the pipes in the, in the base district, and we're going to be able to do another phase with the same money, plus a little dip, and that doesn't take that much more. So it's really a, a great thing. It puts a little bit ahead of schedule in trying to, to remediate the problems that we have with infiltration and I N I at the, at the base.
Which is costly to the town.
It's very costly to the town.
Any other discussion?
We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. Resolution three fifty-one, closing zoning department monthly report.
Resolved to receive and place on file a report from Stephen I. Mahfouq, enforcement officer, for the month of September two thousand fourteen.
Have a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Wood, second.
Second.
Mr. Mannix, any discussion? We'll call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cash?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, the resolution carries. Resolution three fifty-two, permission to sell a ninety-nine two tandem dump truck to another municipality.
Whereas normal use requires the town of Placerville to periodically update vehicles, equipment used to maintain roads in the town of Placerville. Whereas the highway department has a nineteen ninety-two Ford L nine thousand dump truck with a three fifty cat engine with a hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and sixty miles, two thousand sixty hours, with an L eighty-eight transmission that is no longer needed. needed in the surplus equipment. Whereas the Village of Danmore now wishes to purchase said dump truck from the town of Plaister Highway Department, whereas the town board has considered, said request and acknowledges that nineteen ninety-two dump truck is surplus and needs to be replaced. Therefore be resolved that the highway superintendent is hereby authorized to make said sale to the Village of Danmore for an agreed price of eight thousand dollars, and it be further resolved that the supervisor is hereby authorized to send, sign any and all related documents to the sale of this vehicle. And it be further resolved that a copy of this resolution be given to the finance manager and highway superintendent.
Motion.
So.
Mr. Wood, second.
Second.
Mr. Cashman, any discussion? Rock call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cashman?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, resolution carries. That's all I have for formal resolutions this evening, but I would ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the proposed sale of real property.
Make a motion and we go into executive session.
Mr. Mannix, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wood, any discussion? Rock call.
Thomas Wood?
Yes.
Martin Mannix?
Yes.
Michael Cashman?
Yes.
Bernie Bassett?
Yes, we will go into executive session at seven thirty-three. I don't anticipate any further action, but that's always possible. Do you have anything you'd like us to sign if you'd like to leave, knowing it's a school nine oh? If you please do that, then you may leave.
Only, only if it, if it's okay if I put your names down on my thing or not.
Absolutely. Do you need anything signed by us?
No.
Okay.
You guys can come back next week for two weeks in a row.
Excellent. We look forward to seeing you.
We'll be a little more prepared, because we get this off the website now.
Next week, we'll work session, does that count?
Because if they go on the website, they can download everything and follow along.
Yeah, we know that now.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
The website is W W dot town of Plaister dot com, and you go on department, you go on the, of the, go to department.
Be dried out.
Yeah.
Are you all dried out?
Yeah, it will, it makes more sense, you know, and next week it's, because they actually...